September sixth, meeting of the Danvers School Committee to order and let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. The mission of the Danvers Public Schools, creating a supporting, a supportive environment where all learners thrive. The vision, graduates of Danvers Public Schools will be adaptable, resilient learners, empowered to thrive in a complex and ever-changing world. This meeting is being broadcast on Danvers Community Access Television. Is anyone in the audience recording? Seeing none? Items of interest to the superintendent? Do I have that right? Or public comment?
We have data items from the community as well?
Or any items from the community? Paul, you had something?
Guys are fancier than we are with HRIC. Couple of items of interest, we are on Saturday, October fourth, having our fourth, I believe, celebration. It's on a Saturday, it's from five to eight PM at the Danvers High School atrium. So there'll be ethnic food, dancing, music, and I think dance instruction if anybody's up to it. I had a meeting with Kristen Anderson and we had a great meeting and discussed a lot of things, by the way. And I want to thank Mr. Bauer for putting me in touch with him. But we also covered some other ground that we eventually probably will have more activities as we go on through the year. One other thing, or a couple of other things, but one important thing that I'd like you to know, and the community, is that previously we had a scholarship program that would give scholarship, scholarship awards to graduating seniors. We have expanded that, it still has that little bit in it, the scholarship, but it's also going to be able to go out to other community, areas of the community, public schools. It may be something else that the school department would like to run as a program for teachers and students or something like that. But it's going to be a grant award program. It will also go out to other committees in the town that would be, meet the needs and goals that we try to pass forth, so pass on. So, but I just wanted to let you know, that's gonna, that's changing. So, we're in the process, we've developed a program, we voted it in, we're going with it, and come this fall, right now, at our next meeting, we're going to be discussing and hoping that we get some folks interested in applying for grants. That's two. We also have a new slate of officers for this coming year. A new chair will be Johan Hunter, the vice chairs will be Jorge Sanchez Salager and Karen Greysdorf. A new treasurer will be Sarah Gooddale O'Brien. We will organize at our next meeting on Thursday, the eighteenth. At that time, we will have a new liaison for this committee. It's, might be me, it might not be me, but in any event, we'll let you know. And we also appreciate the liaison you support and send to us every year, okay? Any questions? Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity.
Hi, everyone. I'm Julie Bolduc DeFilippo, I'm the Chair of the Danvers CPAC. It's lovely to see everyone and welcome back. We have, as you heard, been very busy over the summer. We have just finalized our survey results from the last academic year, where parents gave us input on what they would like to see CPAC do and where they would like to see the special education system have some growth. And so, we will be, you know, reaching out with that information soon. And we've also used that information to form our strategic plan for this upcoming year, which is really grounded in the theme of building, since we're fairly new board. Where our three goals are coalescing around building relationships, building community, and building sustainability for the future. One of the great milestones that we've made is we've established a 501(c)(3), the Friends of Danvers CPAC, that will be able to fundraise and, you know, do sort of collaborate in other ways. So, that was a milestone that we're really excited to get out of the way and get, and get going on. And, you know, we're hoping to really welcome parents in with support groups, with more informal ways to sort of connect and low-pressure ways, is something that we heard, that, you know, and be more approachable and things like that. So, we're really excited to collaborate with all of you and DPS going forward. So, thanks.
Through the chair, if I may?
Sure.
If this is an appropriate time. Principal Strauss asked me for the high school principal, just to put in a plug for our community event, the first Danvers High School Community Unified Basketball Game. It's collaboration between CPAC Student Services, our public school system, as well as the high school. It'll be September thirtieth in the Field House at four o'clock. So, it's for all people of Danvers. We're inviting all special education parents, K through twelve, their families, all Danvers High students, special education teachers in the district, central office, school committee, you're invited, and we'll have media presence. And just so you know, all the athletes will be in attendance, the practice will be cut short that day, and they'll be there with the marching band in the Field House. And we're really looking for a way to bring the narrative that we're welcoming unified community for all students. And really to show that, you know, all students are important to our building, and certainly how special education parents can see how we embrace, you know, special abilities that the children possess, and certainly know that there's a place for our students in our community. And really just want to showcase the partnership and just how grateful we are with CPAC and our Student Services Department, and it's a great opportunity. So, there'll be more information to follow.
Thank you for that. Anyone else from the community? Seeing none, we will move on to information from the superintendent. Oh, do I have to do that? This will be the end of public comment?
All right. Thank you very much. I hope to do this right, I have my clicker here. So, we will move on to the announcement of our student representatives. The first thing is we have Olivia, Ali's back with us, she's a senior. But now we have a wonderful young man who's joining us, Nate Silva, he's a junior at the high school. And, welcome Nate, glad that you're here. And I'll turn this over to the students for your report.
Thank you. So, I'm so excited to be returning again as my senior this year. So, I just wanted to start by recognizing some of the things that happened a little bit in August, right before school started. The Be Kind Legacy, which is a heartfelt initiative led by DHS students Natalie Barrett, Alejandro Boudreau, and Megan Ryan. This is a legacy to honor the memory of our beloved teacher, Ms. Ritzer. And their goal is to have a beautiful memorial that is going to be installed in the Danvers High School Library, and it's going to celebrate Ms. Ritzer's lasting legacy of her kindness. In the first week of August, the Winchester Savings Bank generously donated a thousand dollars to support the project, and I just wanted to express thank you for helping them and helping the kindness live on in our school community. Another thing that happened in August, right before school started, was the Best Buddies Club had their car wash. I'm the Vice President of the club this year, I'm super excited about it. And it was a really fun day for all of us. We got very wet, lots of soap, but I wanted to thank the girls' field hockey team, the volleyball team, as well as the soccer team for coming and helping and supporting in the time that we had the car wash. It was a huge success and we raised a lot of money to help our club do fun things and have fun events and parties over our school year.
Kindergarten orientation was a huge success and we welcomed the class of twenty, twenty thirty-eight into our school system as the newest little learners.
And then, on the first day of school over at the high school, it did not disappoint. We started the morning having a big school meeting in the gym with an inspiring all-school assembly. Molly Verhueski, Addie Lamar, and Lily Delafano did an amazing job at leading the Pledge of Allegiance. And we also had a performance that morning by Vocal Alliance. Mr. Strauss reminded us of the four core values that guide everything we do. Those values are respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence. So, five students from each of the crowd in the stands were picked to win Falcon gear for naming them all. I was one that was picked and I won an awesome Nike sweatshirt that I'm super excited about. But it was a really fun morning and it was an easy way to ease back into school, didn't feel like we were going straight to classes, and it was fun.
Over the weekend, the Danvers Falcon Marching Band performed that Co-Secure event in Gloucester. We ended up, I'm a member of the marching band, we ended up playing some of our stand tunes, like we played Danger Zone, some that you would hear at football games. We also had our car wash in August, which was a pretty big success. And over at Holton Richmond, the sixth grade math students spent their first week collaborating on working on agreements for their ultimate classroom. They wrote on posters to represent things that would make up their dream classroom. These were hung around their classroom to remind them what they wanted in their classroom for the school year and what their classes would look like.
And then, I'm not sure what day this was, but I also know that a couple of the fourth grade classrooms went in their sciences, in their science classes to create their own electrical systems. And I saw lots of pictures of them working outside, sparking their learning interest and trying their electrical systems with trial and error. And then, I also wanted to recognize all of the sports teams have been doing a great job. The volleyball JV team has had a ton of wins, I know. Soccer team has had a ton of wins, and our football varsity team had a win on Friday night against Concord. So, it's been a really fun week and we're excited for what's to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you mind talking about, did you get one of the spots painted in the parking lot?
Seniors also, for the first time in Danvers history, got to paint their own parking spots. So, it was a fundraiser for our class, so it was seventy-five dollars to pay for the parking spot. And then, you got to submit your design before you did it, and then we had a painting day, which was August twenty-first. It rained a little bit in the morning, so it set us back a little, but we were able to do the parking spots that day. There was, it was so much fun having our class come together. And it was really unique because the parking spots looked awesome. And, yeah, it was really fun. It was something very cool since we'd never been able to do it before, so we were really happy about that. Thank you.
Well, thank you and welcome aboard Nate. We've heard some great reports, lots of great reviews on the work you're doing, so thank you. Awesome, we're going to shift gears now and I'd like to introduce Ms. Christina Ryan, our Director of Student Services, who will introduce our new administrators. As you know, one of the items that we've been working on is student services and how can we stabilize and improve our programming? And she's introducing our new Assistant Director of Student Services, as well as Team Chairs that will start this year. Ms. Ryan?
Great, thank you, everyone. With me today, I have Sue Donatell, who is our new Assistant Director of Student Services at the secondary level.
Hi, everybody, excited to be here.
We also have Bethany Stangus, who has been our preschool coordinator and school psychologist for quite some time. She is now serving in a new administrative role, is our pre-K and elementary team chairperson at Riverside and Highland School. We also have Erin Gibson, who is our full-time team chairperson at Smith. And Ms. Cleona Kaoshi, who is our team chairperson at Holton Richmond Middle School. Welcome aboard, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Are you proud of yourself?
Thank you very much, and we look forward to a great year, and I think it's great progress. We've found a way budgetarily to make things work, and we're looking to stabilize, we said, student services, and now we have a layer of administrative coverage that can really go a long ways and we'll update you throughout the year. Thank you, team, for being here tonight. All right, we're going to move forward to the opening of schools. It's working good. Our staff orientation, new staff was on August twenty-first. We had over forty participate with our new hires of our teachers, also food service, a few instructional assistants. Just a great, positive Bible morning. Kristen Anderson, she has taken on the role of leading that orientation and added her own pizzazz, and it was a wonderful morning. Chair Shannon came over and gave some inspiring words. And really, a lot of people talked about that, so thank you. And all of our team really came together to welcome our new staff members, our administrative assistants in central office, principals and directors, it was really a great. And launched our mentor program for teachers, but we also launched our new mentor program for our instructional assistance and behavior text, which I think is unique to the area. So, we'll talk more about that as the year progresses. Our staff came back on the twenty-seventh, and we had an awesome opening of schools with our staff that Wednesday morning. We had a delicious breakfast for all staff, and then we assembled in the auditorium where we were welcomed by the marching band. We had our acapella group Falcon Eyes, did an outstanding performance. Mr. Shannon, again, gave a welcome from the school committee, it was a drop the mic moment. And we had welcome from Senator Joan Lovely, as our Representative Sally Kirins came as well, our town, our town manager Jill Cahill, she gave a welcome, as well as Chief Lovell and our DTA and IABT leadership Kathleen Murphy and Shannon Chan. It was really just a wonderful day and we set it off and just really kept it to the minimum and really looking for ways that we can improve as a district, but more importantly, support our staff and give our students the best experience possible. Talked about branding and the things that we need to do to keep moving forward, and I'll talk about that later tonight. But it was an outstanding effort, the buildings are in great shape, very well done by our DPW, and certainly a lot of prep goes into opening the doors. We want that just right for the staff, and that was really awesome. The DPW walk-through was that Friday, August twenty-ninth, and went through the summer worklist. We stopped at Riverside, Holton Richmond, and Thorpe. And really just the way to highlight the buildings, but more importantly, just see all the work that has gone throughout the summer to address items, and that was, that was an excellent day. Our students came back on September second, we had two early release days to kind of ease into the school year, but it was a strong opening. I had the opportunity to get around to most of the schools for the arrivals and dismissals and walk the halls and just really just say hello, stand the other way while they're trying to reacquaint with the students, but it was just so impressive, the excitement and energy, and a lot of positivity. Feedback from our administrative team reflects that as well, so thought it was, was a great, great opening of schools and a great week. And then today, our pre-K, our youngest learners, today was the first day, and I'm all intents and purposes, I attended the open house a week prior, and some parents were a little nervous the first time, but I know it went very well, so we look forward to an update on that. So, that was the opening of schools, I think one of our, actually, I think it's my third start, really, and it was certainly the best of my three years, so it was awesome.
If I may? Please. The one takeaway I had on that first day of school, I was simply amazed at the energy that was in the room by the staff. And, and looking around, everyone was just happy to be there, and it's like everyone was friends with each other. It was amazing, the relationships that were in that room, even with, you know, sometimes you see administration stand away from staff, and they weren't, everyone was, was just interacting, and it was, it was a very positive day, I have to say. And the schools looked great on Friday morning, they really did, so kudos to everyone who was involved with that.
And I think the one piece that, I give my personal message, but, you know, I just think I'm humbled and honored to be the superintendent, a lot of gratitude and just reflecting, like, what do I want the year to be? Really just the opportunity to serve, and, and I think that's our approach. You know, there are a lot of challenges, and there will be challenges every year, but we're very fortunate that we have a supportive community. I think we have great staff, as you, as you said, Mike, and just great families and students, and just a lot of, a lot of good things happening, and now I just want to say, this is a lot of gratitude here, but knowing that we're going to be in for a great year, so wanted to share that. And then, I want to turn this over to Kristen for an update on professional development.
Thank you so much for having me here. We had a lot of great professional development this summer, so as you know, we have two days in June, two days in August, and in that time, that's all optional PD. So, teachers could come to over eighteen different workshops. In that, two-hundred-and-fifty educators participated, so that's more than I've ever heard in any other district. And the topics included dyslexia, co-teaching, elementary math, artificial intelligence, safety care training, the Wynn Block, and the Community Block at the secondary level, secondary curriculum alignment, youth mental health, first aid, clarity for learning book study, Wayfinder, which is our new SEL curriculum, Portrait of a Learner, and genocide education at the secondary level. These were all organized by Julie Pasternak, Peter DiMauro, Christina Ryan, Derek Munyon, and Janelle Maroney are head nurses. So, we had something new this year, this is for aspiring leaders, teacher leaders within the district, so teachers who might want to become a department chair or maybe a principal. We had forty people participate in a two-day workshop that'll go all the way through the school year, will meet four more times. And we used a text, meaning-wise, which was Small World. The author of it, I've been using this text with teacher leadership for years and years and years, but the author of it was actually the college roommate of one of our teacher leaders, Lee, and so now she's coming to speak to our group, I'm so excited. So, we're meeting on September eleventh, on Thursday again, November thirteenth, March twelfth, and May fourteenth. So, hopefully we'll have a lot of distributive leadership throughout the district.
And I have to say, that was impressive, we had all of our principals, our directors there. It was a great opportunity, just breaking it down, it wasn't just Kristen leading the training, but we broke it down and, and we shared. I think that's the mantra, is distributive leadership. We, these jobs are too big for any one person, and they really have, there's so many leaders in our district, and we're looking for ways to help increase that. And I think that was an outstanding two days. I know before the start of school, we're all busy, but it was time more than well-spent, and looking forward to our meeting next Thursday. Awesome. All right, and then I'm going to end my update with our annual safety meeting. So, traditionally, we've had a presentation with the Danvers Police Department and our school department, is covering basic safety procedures and protocols, primarily the enhanced lockdown and those types of scenarios, happens right here in the multipurpose room. In the last two years, we're happy to put this on because it's great for the community to see the updates. Attendance hasn't been great, to be honest with you, and we do tape it and we do send this, the tape of the presentation out to the community, but this year, we're looking, we're actually looking to do something a little differently. We're going to still have a presentation, but we're looking to bring that in-house to our, our studio at the high school with DCAT, and we're going to film it and have more of an interactive session that we'll tape and we'll send out to the community right around the same time, towards the end of the month, that will cover the same items in the presentation. We, we feel that that might be beneficial, because I'd like to follow up with a couple superintendent coffees with Chief Lovell and myself, to get around to see if there's any questions by any families about safety procedures and protocols. The dates are still to be ironed out, I have a meeting this week with DCAT and our teacher at the high school. We want to involve more students in our productions, so this is a great opportunity for that. Because there are a couple of other events we'd like to run for some events, so we're, we know that our capacity to have night events, you know, people are very busy, so we're going to shift it around a little bit. All right, that's, that's the update. And I'll have more information on the safety presentation that'll go out to the community.
Thank you. One question, how the, how was the cell phone policy going on? Any early indicators on that one?
Yes, in fact, several early indicators. Principal Strauss has shared some feedback from some of the, the parents that were involved earlier this summer, just to delve through the change in the policy. I've seen that be very positive today. We meet with the union leadership on a weekly basis, so Kristen and myself, with Kathleen Murphy and Patrick Kelleher, we sat down, and Kathleen's social studies lead at the high school, and she indicated that things are going very well. So, hearing it from a teacher's lens, hearing it from a few of the parents, I should have asked, we should have asked our high school students?
We'll get them next time.
We'll get them next time. But the, the pieces, which is interesting to me, is that the feedback from some of the students through the teachers' eyes and parents' eyes, there's a little bit of relief. So, it takes a little bit of the pressure off, if everybody's doing it and everybody's consistent with it, that, that part of it, I think, has helped. I'd love to get some student feedback, but I know as the policy goes, you know- you know, regardless of what happens with, with the legislature at this point, you know, I think we're, it's the right direction to move in. And if there's any changes on Capitol Hill, obviously we can adjust this policy, which I think is a good thing, so. Yep, and I'd love to get some feedback at our next superintendent's advisory council, which will be at the end of the month.
Sounds good. All right, let's move on to unfinished business. Do you need time for this to set up for the therapeuter audit report time?
Yes, we're a little early, so I just want to make sure that our, we can dial in on Zoom for Dr. Hirschberg, Dr. Alex Hirschberg, who conducted the audit on our therapeutic centers. And he conducted a therapeutic audit. Is he up, Dr. Hirschberg?
He's probably on mute. Evening, everyone.
How are we doing tonight?
Can I hear you?
Yes, can you hear us?
I can, I can.
And we'll get your slides up here momentarily as well.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Great.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hirschberg.
Pleasure to be here. So we'll, we'll just, just, I, should I bring the slides up for myself or will they be on the Zoom? Yes, okay. Thank you. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the audit of the district's social emotional programs. I'm going to go to slide two here. So the first thing I just want to discuss a little bit is why in-district social emotional programs are so important, right? And, and if we're going to, if we're going to have them, we need them to be, to be rigorous and, and grounded in best practice. The reason why these programs are so important, one is, is that it's so important to keep students connected to their community and keep them connected to positive peers. One of the things that, that can happen at times, not always, right? But one thing that can happen at times is that when students are placed out of district, it's, there are much less opportunities for kids to be with, in a more inclusive setting.
Can I ask for a pause? We're not seeing your slides. Okay, we don't see the slides. Dr. Hirschberg, I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation. We are not able to see your slides. Can you share?
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm sorry. I, I had sent them over, so I thought you guys had them and then I was, I was following along. I'm happy to share my slides.
Yes, are you, right, the pub, right?
I'm getting, I'm getting there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My apologies.
Yeah, sorry, I was, I was confused about that. Okay, how's that looking, everyone?
Great, thank you.
Okay, fantastic, so sorry about that. So, so we, you know, really, there's just a tremendous benefit of keeping kids in their community and keeping them with access to inclusion and, and positive peer role models, right? Of, of effective self-regulation. Another really important reason why this programming is so essential is that there have been significant increased costs for out-of-district placements. And we really have limited, limited to no quality control over the types of services that are provided at those placements, right? So it, it, there is this real disconnect between what happens when we make a placement and how we're ensuring that the student is really learning the skills that would allow them to return. Because if we're going to send a student out of district, it, it really becomes imperative that we try our best to, to build the skills and then help them come back. Again, bringing them back to their, to their community and with their peers. So, so there's just, from my perspective, and this is why, this is a lot of the work that I do with, with schools across the state of Massachusetts, is really doing our best to build rigorous, strong in-district social emotional programs that can meet students' needs and help them access their academics. So just a reminder about hazard guard. The district engaged Rebus and Associates to complete a special education audit for the district. Among, among other things, you know, one of the, within the social emotional space, one of the things they commented on was an increase in emotional challenges in, in Danvers public schools that really are familiar to most districts. I don't think it would come as a surprise to the folks on the school committee that youth today are experiencing an increase of mental health diagnoses as a whole and greater challenges with emotional and behavior regulation. And of course, I could, I could talk your ear off for, for hours about the various factors that might be, that might be driving that increase. But, but it is there and it is really impacting schools, not only across Massachusetts and New England, but really across the country. And in addition, Rebus and Associates recommended sort of increased clarity about the continuity in social emotional programs, programming. So, you know, how is Danvers public schools addressing these increase, this increase in emotional challenges in the youth that we are educating? So it was, it was that audit that led Christina Ryan to seek me out to work with and, and talk with stakeholders, observe and develop this report to discuss the district's continuum of specialized in-district social emotional program, program. So I'm going to go over like sort of an overview of some of the findings and recommendations. So the first one here is overall, you know, we really want to seek vertical alignment between programs. So we want to see some continuity and a, and some coherent continuity as we go between elementary, middle and high school in thinking about the ways that we are both supporting the students we're serving within these programs, but also some common language and a common approach to remediating the, the underlying skill deficits that these students are presenting with. And one of the, one of the things we want to work towards is a program continuum that moves towards a less restrictive educational environment over time, right? We want, we want to be building levels of independence as opposed to becoming more restrictive. And so one of the things that we're seeing is in the elementary model is much more oriented towards inclusion and things become more restrictive as, as students get older. And so we, we, we really want to be thinking critically about what's getting in the way of us building that independence. And part of that, I think, is that we want to have a consistent approach to skill building. So we, we, we don't want to just be thinking, you know, how do we provide accommodations and modifications to reduce our students' exposure to the types of events that bring up emotional distress and possible behaviors? But instead, focus on approaches to identifying and concrete, doing concrete skill building so that students have improved emotion regulation skills and then gradually exposing them to the types of demands that they'll experience in the classroom. So, so there's, there's going to be a real focus through PD this year on what are the skills that we need to build and how do we do that? And, and part of the how do we do that is thinking critically about the different members of the, of the team and how does each member play a role? And so there were a number of recommendations regarding teaming structures. So how does the, what does the social worker do versus the special education teacher versus the, versus the BCBA? And how they'll all come together to support both skill building and skill generalization? How we take those skills and, and bring them into the classroom and help, help a student use them with independence? Another key component of the audit is thinking about the, the model that we, that we operate within our program. And so there are really sort of three different types of models. You have a full inclusion model where basically students are receiving supports inside the, inside the general education to help them access academics. You have a substantially separate where they're accessing all of their education outside of the general education setting. And then there's this hybrid model where we can be flexible and by providing access to a substantially separate experience for those who need it, right? In order to focus on emotion regulation skill building. But then when they show readiness and when the data suggests that they're ready, we then find strong opportunities for them to go into inclusion to apply those skills. And the reason why we want to move to a hybrid model is that we don't want to overly restrict access to inclusion, right? But we also don't want to simply put a student into an inclusion setting that they've shown that they're struggling to, to manage those demands only to have them experience lots of distress and engage in behaviors that can have social costs, right? So we, we really want to determine how to help students be most successful. And one of the ways that we need to do that is by, by having the time to work with students on concrete skill building. Practicing those skills, role-playing those skills and then going into inclusion to apply those skills with support. So another, another part of this that you'll see in the, the audit is the importance of making skill building a core component of not just counseling, but the, the entire program experience. The way that I like to think about the students that we, that we serve within these programs is that they have a specific learning disability in emotion regulation. Now, that's not like a, a true term, but what's helpful is, is that it, it helps us conceptualize that our students are behind grade level in these essential soft skills that they need to be able to navigate learning. Because learning is just as much an emotional exercise as it is a cognitive exercise. And so because of that, we need to focus both on differentiated instruction in these emotion regulation skills and arming our counselors with the evidence-based interventions in order to do that, as well as high rates of practice. And so we'll be working this year, a big focus on helping our staff create skill development plans that talk about exactly how we're going to be teaching the skills as well as how we're going to be supporting the student in generalizing those skills to the classroom. Another piece in the report that you will see is more related to, to secondary school and high school. And a lot of stakeholder interviews talked about the challenge of how do we, how do we seek to engage our learners within this program to really see the relevance of a secondary education, right? How to help them see the relevance in coming to school day after day after day and taking those healthy risks to learn? And one of the challenges that the, that the program has faced is on attendance, right? And consistent engagement. And, you know, one of the great things that the program is doing is offering a course in sort of applied mathematics. So offering a math course that incorporates things like budgeting and understanding these daily financial literacy skills. And that was identified by the students as their favorite class because it was really meaningful to them. And there's a history in the, in the high school program of, of finding ways to offer opportunities for work-study and thinking about some unique ways to help kids get to the finish line. And so I think that, that there are some recommendations around, you know, how do we, how do we find relevant learning experiences that bring, that really provide that extra motivation to bring our students in? And how do we engage directly with them in understanding, well, what is the value of getting a secondary education? And how does getting a high school diploma relate to my personal goals and what's valuable to me? So that's something more related to sort of secondary and high school, but, but is going to be a, a focus area in development there as we again, seek to address some of the attendance and engagement problems within that cohort. So currently, I will be engaging throughout the year in ongoing professional development for program staff this year that included a afternoon on Monday, the 25th of August with, with the staff. And, you know, that work sort of discussed some of the findings and some of the recommendations moving forward. And we're really going to be trying with the idea of vertical alignment in mind, really trying to start out by focusing in on a common way that we are identifying the lagging skills that are getting in the way in a comprehensive approach to, to building those skills utilizing our multidisciplinary team. So that, that's an overview of, of the report and some of the recommendations.
Any questions? Any thoughts, comments?
I definitely appreciate the efforts by the whole team behind all this. It's something that definitely, the stressors of kids today aren't the same as they were 20, 25 years ago or more. So, you know, the, the plan is a great plan, I believe. Being someone who works in schools, I wish there was a little bit more of this across the board, but I appreciate all of your efforts.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. I'm really curious about what you mentioned in regards to rising costs for out-of-district placements and the, and the specific goal of potentially bringing kids back. Can you talk a little bit more, more about that with any like specific examples in districts where, you know, what have other districts done in regards to auditing, you know, outside programs? And working with parents who sometimes don't want their kids to come back? Like is there, is it one or the other? Is it, you know, the, if the audit finds that the student is not able to come back to the school because they're not learning, is that an opportunity to find a better program? Because I can't imagine bringing someone back who wouldn't gain anything, that'd actually be losing. So I'm just trying to, like have a better understanding of that thought.
Hi, Dr. Hirschberg, it's Christina Ryan.
Oh, hi.
Yeah.
Hi. Just for everybody's benefit, Dr. Hirschberg, the reason we brought him in was to really look to see how we could make our in-district programs mirror those that our students are looking towards outside of the district. So he didn't look at necessarily what those programs had to offer in the way that you're talking about. He looked at them as far as what are the components that exhibit, that exist in those programs? How can we rebuild our own programs to make sure that students can remain here in district? So he did look at the numbers to see how our population has shifted in that realm and really looked at those student profiles to help us determine how we can better match our in-district programming.
Okay, so then I misunderstood. I mean, I thought it was like an audit to make sure, because quality control and out-of-district placement, how is that relevant to what we're doing if they leave the district?
He was looking at what the trends happen to make the students leave and then how we can kind of stop that. So, Dr. Hirschberg, totally add in your own thought. I just wanted to make sure that the backstory was there.
I, I would just like to understand how that works in practice, like in a real world environment?
So, so what I'm, what I'm, can I, I'm just, just, what my, the reason why I brought that up was, is it, is to try to illustrate why it's so important to have these programs present in the district, right? That, so we really want strong programmings to, strong programming to be able to offer the, of the least restrictive environment for our students. And, and I was just sort of going over some of the reasons why this work is so important. Not talking about bringing students back in or anything, anything specific like that, but, but really describing the imperative of why rigorous in-district social emotional programming is so valuable.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Well, thank you, Dr. Hirschberg, for partnering with us on this. It is, it's very important work. There, you know, we have a lot of kids that are at risk with their social emotional, you know, maturity. And hopefully we will see, I'm sure we will see benefits of this partnership. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Take care, everyone. Good evening.
So the superintendent's summit of evaluation is next on our agenda. Can I have a vote to accept the findings of the summit of evaluation?
Need a motion, right?
Yep.
Yeah, a, a motion to go over the summit of evaluation of the superintendent. Yeah, a a motion to go over the summit of evaluation of the superintendent. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think, you know, we we go through this process, and I think it's a it's a valuable part of this, and this is important to to continue to to see how our superintendent's doing. And um you know, I I think a lot of the different areas that we evaluated them in were um, you know, it's it was a comprehensive process and what how we did it. And um, you know, I I thought Dan did a great job last year, and and I I think we illustrated it, but he had a lot of goals that we were able to to say whether he hit them or not. So I think um, you know, from from my perspective, I I thought that uh and also what he put together as evidence, too. He had he had clear goals set up at the beginning of the year and um and and clear evidence to show that he hit or or ma- maybe possibly missed the mark in in some of the areas. So even in places that that I think Dan um might have missed the mark was he set aggressive goals at the beginning of the year, like uh like the Dibbles. There was a a goal in there for the Dibbles to be at eighty-five percent, and I think it came in just shy. One one was seventy-nine percent, and one was sixty-two point five percent. So but I mean, even though there was a a miss on that, it was such a great increase. It was a forty-six percent increase. So I think we we started to see some really good data that came out of that, and I I think that's what the community's looking for. That's what the parents are looking for, to see that we're we are making some really good progress. Um there was also another uh statistic that stood out to me in the district, which was on the AP uh the kids that took the AP exam. And seventy-five percent of the kids that took the AP exams actually got a three or higher. So I mean, this is gonna, you know, the kids are starting to get college credit for that. Um and I I thought that these are great things that that we are making progress for. So um uh, you know, I I thought Dan did a great job, and we can get into a little bit more uh specifics as well, but that's just my initial opening comment. Thank you.
Hey, Dan, um and and team and everyone who's left. Um it for me, it's really, I mean, a- a- across the board, I think we can't say enough about Dan's impact um at the school, but I'll specifically call out um, you know, two areas of assessment, not to take away from any other, but since uh my colleague here is uh Josh has already talked talked about the academics, I really want to call out the management and operations component, um especially since I've been here, seeing the marked improvement in the areas of engagement, um his efforts across the board, you know, and creating a safe and efficient and supportive learning environment. We've gone through two successful budget processes, I believe, with you so far. Um uh teacher negotiation, which could have gone one way or the other, but specifically some of the intervention that you you put in on both sides um really helped us come to a speedy agreement with the with the teachers' association, and we we can't say enough about that. Where districts around us were collapsing and even having strikes. Um I think your efforts were incredible, the trust on the teacher's side and on the school's committee side. I can't say enough about that. Um the work that you've been doing with the district threat assessment and the program and the updates year over year, uh I think have been outstanding in regards to bringing in the community and the police department, so we really, really appreciate that. And then going down to the community, can't can't really say enough about that, not just from what I see personally, but just what parents in the community s- say to me directly in regards to, you know, how much longer is he gonna be here? Are we gonna be able to hold on to him? Is he potentially going to another town? And those are all things that we we hope we can counteract. But um you've been really great at helping to uh foster a strong community, so it's really no surprise. I knew from day one when we got you, and we saw all the letters coming in from Marblehead and the public posts and things like that about you and the type of person that you are, but you've done nothing but um not only, you know, meet all of those expectations, but you're continuously exceeding them and still continuously learning and being humble. So um I think uh on behalf of the community and for me personally, like just thank you for, you know, for being here and and thank you for always being open and humble and, you know, doing everything you can and the time that you commit, so wanted to share that.
Well, since these guys uh touched upon just about everything, uh I do want to say that uh my one of my other hats is uh with the rec. department in the summer. And whenever I'm around kids and your name comes up, you can see the joy in their eyes. So it's not you being in the office at the high school and just being behind the scenes, but these kids know who you are. Some of them have seen you play kickball, from what I hear. Um but they know exactly what's going on. They they see you pull in and and they're come running. So it's, you know, o- on that side of the business end of it, you're you're hitting all spots, as well as, you know, with the hearts of the kids. We appreciate that as well.
One more thing, Mr. J- and and I think we're hitting that, but I think that's where you really shine, Dan, is your community engagement. And I put that in the evaluation, I thought it was exemplary, and I thought it's uh um I was gonna bring up the kickball thing, but I I would like to see more pictures of the kickball thing, if we could. Uh but no, I think I think just your presence at everything is um it 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 goes a long way to see you at the awards night, see you at the at the sporting events, and I think you'd you don't just shut down at the end of the the school day, and it's uh I think it is it is noticed and it's appreciated, so.
The kickball is uh impressive, you know, when you consider you walk him walking around, he always has a limp, but he was willing to jump in, so that 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 in and of itself is impressive. You know, my first year on the committee, um sitting back, listening, watching, it was obvious that there's just a lot of good work going on, you know, from from being self-critical and looking inward, especially with that special ed program, and and not just doing that work, but then putting action in place, right, to correct these things. I I was just grateful for being here and being part of this effort, you know, and 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 I think a lot of that has to do with how Dan conducts himself in the business of of the district. So I really appreciate I really appreciate the looking in with piece and 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 putting those corrections in place. The work that was done on the strategic action plan in getting to Portrait of Graduate, I think, was without a question, it was hit out of the park for a lot of reasons, the work that Dan and the team did, but also the transparency that he brings to all his work. But the transparency on the that plan, there were so many different stakeholders brought into that, the different voices from from town members, uh town employees and leadership of the town, to parents on the, you know, the um the superintendent advisory committee had a lot of input on and uh input on that process and, you know, from positive things to critical things. And that work will continue go to go on this year. So if anyone's listening, you want to be part of the superintendent advisory committee, you're welcome to join, in in all people. Um I agree, Gabe, the the labor, the the putting the collective bargaining agreements to bed and the positive labor management relationship that we enjoy is very important. Bringing the 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 gentleman Paul for transportation, just to look at that, to make that more efficient and to maybe, where can we save money? To your point, the parade, I was walking next to a rock star, you know, who can, you know, it was just obvious that he's in schools and these kids know who he is. And in the hiring practices, we've hired really skilled people, really good people, to take the pieces that are replaced from that first year and now to continue to move this forward. So in a holistic um, you know, perspective, I it it's incredibly positive uh year for for Dan and and the work that he's done since he's been here. And and even the staff showed in their positivity on day one, so I can't say enough for where we're at right now. I'm looking forward to the next year. So do we have to take a vote to accept the evaluation? So we can have that?
I'll put forward a motion to accept the evaluation. A second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
None.
Oh, we've accepted your evaluation summary. But I would just say no. No, you're fine. As a point, why am my computer dying? There it is. As a point of personal privilege, um I'd like to jump to an item in the agenda under new business. D, superintendent contract, since we're talking about his evaluation, superintendent contract and salary for twenty-five, twenty-six. This is the last year of his contract. And so um you know, do you want, do you want to keep on? The question becomes, uh we're happy with him. Let's make sure that he stays around for a while, and and let's address this in a fair fair way if if there's uh no feelings otherwise. So if someone had any thoughts about addressing that, I'd I'd have to say a motion.
All right, I'd like to move that out. We uh accept the superintendent contract salary twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I I think we just had it. You know, I think we we just had a a very positive year, and I think um, you know, the to, you know, get Dan on to stay on for a couple more years on top of the the contract that's ongoing, I think is a a step in, you know, it's continuing to go in the right direction. So I would be all in favor of that, and and I would support the uh the COLA increase as
Anything else? I I mean, I agree, keep just extending it to the two years um gives him an opportunity to to see um the results of the work that's going on. And we and we gives us time um to continue the work as a as a committee with Dan, and now Kristen's on board. So I think that's, I think, in in quite honestly, to keep him from thinking about going anywhere else, right? We want him here. And the COLA, the COLA, I think, is roughly about two point eight-five percent, which is more than fair. Uh if Dan's if Dan's in agreement, I think he he would be, but um yeah, I I think it's a smart move to make. All those in favor of extending the contract two years in um COLA increase to two point eight-five percent? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Long as Dan accepts it, we're good.
I will.
There we go. Thank you. Next item, uh the wellness policy.
Thank you so much. And thank you for those kind words, too. It's an absolute pleasure to serve and very humbled, um but also in the same piece, we have lots of work to do, so this will give an opportunity to keep pushing the work forwards. Thank you all. Thank you. So the wellness policy, I would like to bring forward recommendation for first reading. Um I'm happy to go through the presentation and so that way bring that to a vote. Just quite quickly, the policy itself, the the wellness advisory committee, we meet on a quarterly basis. Our food service director, Emily Cook, along with wellness teachers, uh Janelle Maroney, our uh school nurse lead, uh myself, our athletic director, who is also the curriculum director for physical education. As part of that, we have social workers, members from the YMCA, public health, also our director of recreation, so we have a nice body. Uh we meet on a quarterly basis. This year, we reviewed the policy or wellness policy, which um we really need to review every three years, but we had a coach working with us this year, Allison Doak, from the uh Stalker Institute of Food Nutrition. So the key items are, there's five key areas, uh wellness education, emotional support, uh food and beverages served and sold during the day, food and service operations, physical activity, physical education, and new ones, staff health and wellness. So really, our policy itself is in good shape, we just made some tweaks. I just want to give some just high-level items. For example, in our physical activity, physical education, just being very clear that, you know, physical activity recess will not be used or withheld as a consequence. Um that's common practice, but it had to be stated. And then certainly, the piece about health and wellness for uh staff members, there's several, which I think is important, just, you know, encouraging healthy eating and exercise and just the value of health and well-being, and also variety, provide a variety program and resources on that, which I think is important for a healthy staff, works with a healthy student body. Uh food service operation, just quite frankly, to make sure that we're aligned with the uh national school lunch program, uh school breakfast program, making sure that's available with certain timelines, which we do. We need to be very clear on that. Insert um eligibility for the school breakfast program, even though um our state is one where we have a universal free lunch and breakfast, which is great, but we still want to make sure we go through that process. Uh and also ensure privacy for anybody that's uh seeking out any uh reduced, although it's free, we still have that process. The wellness education, emotional support, again, uh this is stuff that we really do, but just wanted to make sure that it is in the policy, such as fostering a culture, uh respect for differences, uh mental health issues be destigmatized. Uh I think that's important. We do that through our our health curriculum. Age-appropriate social-emotional literacy education, uh raise awareness amongst students, parents, staff members about signs and symptoms of mental health, social, emotional, and substance use, keeping in mind that many of these areas really can be an impact to their their growth, and not only educationally, but just as a young person. Um and then make sure that we have in in-school support services. The other piece, too, that just needs to be very clear is that um not using food or beverages as a reward for academic performance or good behavior or withholding. Just had to be very clear on that. That's been our practice, just to be clear. And then also, too, we we already have a no-food policy for birthdays and holidays, but any food used for any classroom celebration must be reviewed with the school nurse, which supports for allergies, and made sure that's purchased through the food service director. Um and also uh accessibility to free potable water for the school day, which we do. The wellness committee just just states clearly what this is and representatives across. We're looking to um set up our first meeting of the year, and we're actually looking for more members and spreading out the stakeholders, so something will be coming out on that. Uh we must meet four times a year, which we do, and keep minutes, which we do. Um and they recommend keeping the policy and reviewing it every three years. So we we are in good shape overall as the policy, but that's the high-level um changes that we would add. So I'm recommending that this is uh approved for first reading. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Do I hear a a motion?
Motion to approve for first reading.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much. Uh next up is the district improvement plan. We um Kristen Anderson will take this presentation and has worked on this with our leadership team. Next month, next committee meeting, we'll have our school improvement plans, which will follow the district improvement plan. So I'm gonna turn this over to Kristen.
So the district improvement plan is is a one-year plan that follows the Thank you, my friend. So the uh district improvement plan is a is a one-year plan that follows the is the first year of our five-year strategic plan. So we've just taken the four pillars of the plan and had a couple of initiatives under each, and that's what I'd just like to show. So as you can see there, there are four pillars, the teaching and learning pillar, which is really centered on our curriculum, making sure that our um curriculum is student-centered, culturally responsive, and supported supportive of all students, meaning all different kinds of learners have access to the curriculum. School-wide systems and structures is the second pillar, so to design and implement school-wide systems and structures that actively support inclusive, high-quality learning environments for all students. So this is both making sure that there are multiple access points to the curriculum, but it's also using an MTSS system to identify kids who are struggling uh and have ways to bring them up to and hopefully beyond grade level. The third pillar is family and community partnerships, um and this is really looking at including all members of the community, um with a particular focus this year on um members of the community who don't speak English as their first language and may need documents translated, making sure that we have everything translated that everybody needs, uh making sure that all of our events, uh community events, we have babysitting or whatever people need to be able to be uh included. And lastly, we have a focus on district procedures and policies. Um and so that's really, you know, going from all of our older practices, paper-based, to systems um that are technologically based. So that's, those are the four or five initiatives under each one, and we're just gonna go very quickly through each uh priority. So the teaching and learning priority, we, as you know, have a new ELA curriculum. We're having it preschool to grade eight, so this is as a new So this is, as a new curriculum director for you, this is a dream come true. Because kids are gonna have the common language all the way through for eight or nine years of their education, so that, that is wonderful. And I've seen in other districts, a big bump in um achievement just because of something like that. Uh, we are looking uh to choose a new elementary math program, and we're looking to strengthen our high school uh and middle school math program. Uh, we're keeping in place the one we currently use, but strengthening it with more training for our teachers and so forth. Um, we are looking at the portrait of a graduate that you'll hear more about, but there's five competencies, and we're looking to um make sure that kids, kids are building the skills to reach those competencies everywhere. We have a new ES, uh SEL curriculum, Wayfinder I mentioned earlier, so we're implementing that K, uh, sorry, pre-K to five, full out, and then we're doing pilots at grades uh six through twelve, and then with a full rollout for next year. And then um, providing PDA I already talked about, and then looking at the um applied learning projects. So in the second priority, I mentioned some of these, the biggest one I want to point out is that we're bringing together a pre-K to twelve mental health team. So these are all the guidance counselors, school psychologists, board-certified behavior specialists, and we're looking at every aspect of social emotional education and support in our district, mental health and well-being, um, with the professionals that provide that support. So they're really excited, I'm really excited, uh, and Christina Ryan, who's co-leading it with me, is excited, and we're having our first meeting on Friday. So I mentioned some about this, family and community partnerships, we're trying to find ways to bring more people in, um, and so they feel welcomed uh with warmth and understanding as they come into our schools. And then lastly, this is one of the hardest things that we're doing, because you don't get a lot of props for it, but going to um, a much more expanded use of Munis, which is our budgeting software. Um, so now, for example, it's underlying our absence uh for staff and um substitute calling process. So we're doing that, online student registration in Power School, um, looking at a multi-year facilities upgrade, and then aligning budget and operations to our um four strategic goals. And that's it.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a quick question, so the, Dan, I think you mentioned it before, but the rest of the buildings will all ladder up to this, is this kind of the, the way this leaves the umbrella? And then all the, the buildings will then have their individual plans that'll.
Yes, this is the framework, uh, we want to set this as the district, and then what, what really gets more specific is the, the action steps, right, the benchmarks, and like who's doing it? And then how do we know that we've been successful? That, that really dives down more at the building level.
Got it, okay, thank you.
You good? Chris, I have some one question, 'cause uh you talked about a common language, which I can appreciate. Um, but I'm looking at the uh implement school-wide behavior expectations to student and families. How is that gonna, going to look? So, I'm thinking, would some of those behavior expectations, if not all of them, be consistent amongst all the K to fives, the pre-K to five uh schools? With maybe a vertical component, component right into the middle school?
You named it, yep.
Okay.
And so last year, uh, we have a very clear, um, thanks to Julie Posternak and the elementary principals, elementary staff, very clue, clear what we call behavior root matrix. So those are all the basically things that kids shouldn't do. And what are the possible consequences for our first offense, second offense, rub-a-ba. Um, so that we can know exactly what we're doing, and those consequences would be um, educational for students. So it's not just, you know, sort of a slap on the hand, it's like, why did you do that? Well, this is why we don't do that, um, and bring that education piece.
Like a restorative piece to it?
A restorative piece to it, yep, and so they are, the elementary is leading the way, and then the secondary is working on it this year. And they've already made a lot of good ground.
Thank you.
If I may, Chair? Um, just one of the things that's important about the strategic plan is, these four pillars will not change over the course of the five-year plan. What will change every year is like when we dig into specific areas, and then we're working on like, at the conclusion of this, how do we know we were successful? So, we've been putting together that criteria as well. Cause I think this needs to be actionable, otherwise, we don't want this to sit on the shelf. But no, it's fluid as, as we work here, right? If, if something um, happens in terms of budgetarily, like how can we adjust? Or if something happens facility-wise, or whatever, we can make these adjustments, and some of these actually are gonna drive up to the multi-year, for example, the multi-year facilities upgrade, like that's, you know, we need to start having discussions in terms of, you know, we have great facilities, but some of them are getting older. That doesn't mean we're gonna have new buildings in a, in a year, but we need to start that discussion of, you know, what this may entail and start planning that out for the future. I think that's really important, so, a number of these goals will be multifaceted. Um, and they'll change from year to year, but the major priorities, pillars will not, which I think that's clearly what we got from all that strategic plan.
I'm happy to entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that we um accept the improvement plan for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Any discussion, any further discussion? Will these, will these goals be on your side or included in your next evaluation?
Yes, yep, and really look into align our budgetary to this much more closely.
If there's no more discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the branding.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, one of the things that I wanted to talk about tonight really is, in, in, actually, Mike said this in the, his opening speech to our new staff. That's in terms of like, you know, the status quo, you know, we need to break the status quo, and um, one of the things that I know I said come, before coming aboard, the process is, we need to celebrate our successes, but more importantly, dig into like, how can we promote our district? And if you look overall, like what's happening, you know, retention is something that's really important, and that's an area that you know, we're trying to address a lot of ways. Now, moving into my third year, I feel that we're at a point now where we've stabilized, certainly not everything. But we really need to take a deep look and review inside of, you know, what is our brand? You know, when you mentioned Danvers Public Schools, you know, what are, what are the opinions, what are the perceptions? And also, you know, why are kids leaving? You know, and, 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 but, how, more important, like, we have so many great things that are happening. I don't think we're doing a great job pushing that. The student achievement, quite frankly, you know, I know when I came in, we talked about MCAS and different ratings and such, but they do matter. They do matter, and we haven't emphasized necessarily, it's like that's the end-all and be-all. But it comes to a collective body, when you talk about perception and talk about things we're doing, our people are working really hard, we have a great staff. But at the end of the day, we know we have so many pieces, like we should be moving in a direction positive, and that's the work, and that's why I'm glad to be offered the extension so that we can keep moving forward, so. I just wanted to put together some thoughts, this is gonna be an overlying theme throughout the course of the year. Do I have this? Perfect. So obviously, I, I don't want to go through the piece and do a lecture on branding, you, particularly those that are in the business world, or just in general, know like, why is this important? Because really, this is the perception people have of our district, you know, and every single experience everybody has shapes their opinion and perception of this district. So I think perception is a, is a multiplier. Everybody that has a negative experience, whether that's justified or not, it doesn't matter. It multiplies, and by that meaning, you know, people talk and people communicate. On the other flip side, if we have positive experiences, the same thing is true. So I think that really molds um, options for students, we know we're not the only show in town, we're not. And why not us? Where are we headed? Our student achievement data has been flat, it has been, that, that has to change. You know, and we're gonna start digging in and pushing, I know we've said that the last two years, but I think we're at a place now where, where, we're gonna move. Control the controllables, I talked to the staff, like, yeah, the, we, we are blessed to have a great caring staff, you know? And we also know on the outside, you know, public education has been under siege, and that's nothing new. You know, there's, there's so many things that we can say, this and that, it doesn't matter. It matters what we can control, and that's how hard we work, how much we care, and the effort we put forth. And I know that we, we feel like we have that dedication to be moving. And the other piece too is good to be great, you know, I, I think that's, that's the downside of things, right? And in a lot of ways, being good, you fall behind. Pushing to be great is where you want to be, and I know that we can do that in this district. So I put together, you know, there's several components of, I hope this animation works, I apologize if it doesn't. Betsy, you gotta help me on this? Yep, so it breaks down into seven sections, right, your mission, vision, values, visual identity, the logo, what imagery, messaging and voice, you know, what, what is our key piece? What are the messages that we do send? Leadership and spokespeople. Reputation and public perception, the community, academic performance, climate and culture. Experience and engagement. Right? Customer service, we are in a, we are customer service, really. We have to take care of people, but we also have to take care of employees, take care of our students. And what is that experience? Because that leads to perception. Last, not least, and certainly not last, none of these are in order, is digital presence. I mean, that's the world we live in, you know, our website, social media, everything that we send out, that brings our brand into one piece. So we'll talk about different components throughout the year, and we're starting to look at these areas. So if you look at mission, vision and values, we reestablished a new mission and vision and, and values we're continually working on. Visual identity. Messaging and voice, we'll be talking about that. Um, I think leadership and spokespeople, we've crafted, we're moving in a good direction with that. Uh, but the reputation and public perception is areas we need to work on. For a lot of reasons, that's why we're digging into our audits. Um, in fact, we're right now working on an internal bullying harassment audit for our administrative team. Because we know that we need to be consistent, and our practices need to be um calibrated across the district, so we do our best, as we always try, but we have to do our best. And academic performance, you know, when people are making decisions about schools, it starts early, and that, that is part of it as well. Um, and I think the stakeholder experience, that's so critical. But also, how is our presence out there? One thing, the public schools, we're not great at marketing. And that's no knock on that, but that's, that's the reality, but we have to do better, but it kind of goes back to, we have so many great things in place. Now we have to tie this together. And again, we have the mission and vision, that's established. We have our pillars in our strategic plan, we have that set, which is great, we have something to build on. And that continues over the life of the plan. The portrait of the graduate is here. Now we need to make sure, and Kristen's gonna present in October, we have to make sure that all of our students, K-12, pre-K through twelve really, are able to walk away with these skills that will make them competitive when they graduate. I'm not saying our students aren't competitive, but we really need to drive into these important skills. And I think the other piece about thriving, the experience and engagement, right? Everyone, we talk about a sense of belonging, but that has to be for all. Our adults, our family members, our staff, but also our students. You know, if they feel in a good place and they're physically safe and emotionally safe, and our academics are responsive, they meet needs and they're challenging and relevant. Just like Dr. Hirschberg said in, in that strand, that is so important. Then if we do all that, yeah, we're thriving, and that should hopefully lend itself to positive experience and engagement. Again, the sense of belonging and engagement, just to highlight, yeah, that's all the positives, but there's so many things that I know we are doing, but we gotta continually dig in and go further. Danvers, I think, is a great place to work, you know? But what is our reputation and public, public perception? You said it earlier in terms of our hires, I think we've done a great job bringing in talented people for all different roles. But that has to, we have the central office do our part to ensure that our employees are taken well cared of. Cause that triples down to, most importantly, our students. Right? We did a climate and culture survey last year that was the first time we brought everybody together across our stakeholders. Um, and we're gonna work on, you know, how can we go at some of the areas that cover everything? And two big areas, improved communication transparency and recognition appreciation, that builds morale within our staff. Our digital media presence, we're trying, but we know we have more work there. Um, and I know our website, we've had a lot of discussions about how can we, you know, we have a new webpage, thankfully, the school committee, you know, made the recommendation two years ago, Jim Sullivan's done a great job. But we need to make sure that it not only is up to date, but really selling and, and marketing our school. Right? We need to come up with a logo, some sort of visual identity, and these are just some samples. You know, we're really looking at ways, maybe we can involve our students to help design something that really would make meaning of the portrait of the graduate and pull it together with the actual experience that we anticipate our students will and will have. Even a catchphrase, you know, where, where do we stand on, just a simple catchphrase? We talked a lot about this at our Teacher Leadership Institute. And really, we came up with um Grow Together, Succeed Together was one that the group liked. We built it off the uh mission statement. However, you know, that's just from that group, we're gonna, I'm gonna send this out to, out the staff and the community and see what really is our catchphrase, right? And then branding next steps, right? In October, we'll talk more in detail, Kristen's gonna talk about how do we bring the portrait of the graduate to life? What does that mean? How will that come to life? Two, Principal Strauss and Colin Tony, they're gonna do an analysis, present an analysis of retention rates, students that chose not to come to the high school and why. And then also, what's happening with students that have left? What does, what does that look like, just to get a broader picture? You know, I'm looking to create a working group of mixed stakeholders that can help pull all this together. Our superintendent advisory council will be a great sounding board, but I'd like to have a separate group. We have lots of talented families out there and staff that, you know, I think really can help us with this initiative. We're looking at the possibility of bringing a consultant in to help us tie the loose, not loose ends, but pieces together. There are many that do this for schools, and Kristen has been doing some research on that. Something that would be one where we all have the parts, but how do we bring this all together? Our logo, hopefully we can get a student sign on that. Catchphrase. Improved digital media presence. Right? DHS happened an open house in November, right? Last year was the first one they had in April, that's way too late. And that's no knock on that, but they at least opened it up, which was great. The team this year is working on having it, I think it's November seventeenth. And we're also going to invite fifth-grade families to that, as well as those that are looking at high schools. We have to be out there, we'll have the yard signs for that. We'll continue to do an analysis of that staff survey to see how we build the internal components of our uh staff morale. Right? And then the audit results, we need to make sure that we put these into action, right? We've done a lot of work, including tonight, the therapeutic audit, how are we gonna pull that out? How are we gonna put that into action? Next month, when we present the internal audit of bullying harassment, we need to pull out the recommendations and how will we put that into action? As well as all the other audits we've done to move forward. So, that's just the, a, a piece of it, I'm looking, I'll build my goal, one of my goals off of this. But this is multi-layered, for sure, and it's something that, you know, we, we need to really get moving on this, and certainly, I, I know it's resonating, I can see, we talk about these areas. Um, and there's a, there's some areas that might need more to others, like the catchphrase may not mean something to some, but I tell you, academic performance does, and I can tell you that our people are working hard. But we talked a lot about how can we move barriers out of the way so that our staff can work more effectively towards those goals to improve student performance. Our job as the, as administrators is to clear it out of the way, so our teachers that are on the front line have the support they need, so they can continue to do the work and then some. We also need to prioritize, frankly, you know, when we talk about data, you know, what is it and why is it important? You know, and I know I may have soft-played that a little bit throughout the first two years, cause we're stabilizing, but now we need to look hard, again, not saying MCAS is the end-all and be-all, but it's, it's a composite picture, it's a holistic picture. And we have to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable, um, myself accountable, but also everyone that's involved in this process. Because that does tie into reputation, that ties into perception. Right? And I don't want to give away Principal Colin Tony's and Strauss's presentation, but there's a ton of perception that's out there, and some of it might be real. And we have to address it, and I told our staff opening that we have to be vulnerable. And that's okay, that's the only way we can grow. It's not perfect, um, it's not easy, but we have to do that. So, I'll get off of my soapbox, but I wanted to share those concepts and those thoughts with the committee.
If you'd been, thoughts?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I, so I, I was excited to see this come on the agenda, cause I think this is always, we've been talking about this for a while. Um, you know, how do we promote all the great things that are going on out there? And I, I, we see, you know, really good trips and drabs of it coming through on social media, like a couple of things that are happening at the schools. And then we'll post a couple of pictures, that's great. But I loved on the next steps that you're considering bringing in a consultant. Cause I, I think anytime you could bring in an outside thinker. in consultants, because I think anytime you could bring in an outside thinker or somebody that can put the pieces together and do this, just because we're part of a municipality doesn't mean we can't treat this like we're a company, right? Like, let's, let's do something, let's make a splash, let's, let's figure out, because you guys, you know, made a really good start with like even coming up with some of these catchphrases and things like that, like I, I think that's great, but let's, let's see, somebody that does this professionally for a living, maybe they can, you know, if you guys hit a double here, maybe they can hit a triple or a home run, so I think we can, you know, there's definitely room for improvement, I think we're in the right direction.
And if I, if I may, Chair, add, you know, obviously, all this is within, we do, we control the controllables, right? And we've worked really hard to be responsible for a sustainable budget, and certainly, we look at all this knowing that it is time to bring this all together and looking at like a consultant that, you know, does work with schools, but does so that we can work within our budget, you know, there are grants that may be available that can do this for us. But at the end of the day, you know, we're busy running the district, and our principals are busy every day, and I agree, having that outside piece, because they have to be trusted to say, you know, we've done this, and wow, you have this many pieces, that's how you can tie it together. Because ultimately, I don't want to be sitting here a year from now, you know, and this is going to take some time, but I want to be able to say, actually, like, we've accomplished these things, and we have more to go. So it's going to take a while, because perceptions take time to change, they really do, but as the superintendent of our great district, you know, I owe this to our staff as well, because they're working hard. But again, as I said, we got to clear obstacles out of the way, and Kristin's fresh eyes, and some of our new, they're seeing it, but we also have to stabilize and make sure we're doing things, student services, and as well financially, making sure we walk that, that line as well.
If I may, I absolutely love this, and as Josh mentioned, we've been talking about this for a while. I can see the work on the public website, I mean, it's leaps and bounds from where it started, it's, it's looking really good. I don't know who manages it today, but, and I don't know if it's a low-hanging fruit type of thing, but I would love to see, you know, splashes of DECA on here, splashes of, you know, all the honors programs that we run, splashes of where our graduates have gone, you know, it could just be the logos, but little splashes of that, I mean, the DECA program by itself is a gem, it's one of the top, if it's not, is it one of the top programs in the country, if I'm not mistaken?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, that alone, you know, which really brings people, you know, outsiders in to get a look, I think it's a little harder to create narratives, but the imagery of like, you know, DECA, like even medals or something, and, you know, sports and sports, I mean, it's all there, but I mean, the band, the theater, all the things that just kind of pop, would love to see some of that. But again, I know within the budget constraints, I don't know who's managing the page, but I hope we can get some of that up on the site.
And if I may add too, again, Christina's group, student services, and I know Julie's here with CPAC, but that's a big part of the perception too, and that's one of the reasons, you know, we need to be able to show we have a continuum of services, and parents, justifiably, want to make sure that it's the best experience for the child. You kind of asked that question, like, when students go out, you know, how can we bring them back in? That's really tough to do, it really is. So we're really working hard to provide everything we can, so they want to stay in, because not only do we have the services, but they, they feel part of it. So we need to also make sure that we show the opportunities for all students. Again, the unified game, that's a great start, but you mentioned DECA, we have students of all different backgrounds participating, there's a, there's a home for everybody in our schools, I don't know if everybody knows that, but I think we need to make sure we share that message.
You know, on, on opening day, I shared our conversation about the fact that we didn't, we weren't willing to settle for a status quo, and, you know, and they heard that, and they understood it, and, and everything we've said tonight, and certainly ending here, is we don't, nor will we settle for the status quo. I've always said that, and we've talked about this, we all agree, great things happen every moment in every building, every day, and I'm biased, you know, my three, my three children came here, came through the system, had great experiences, and I agree with Gabe, we're our, we're our graduates, you know, they're not all going to college, they don't have to, what are they doing? Where are they serving? Community service experiences should be highlighted, our kids, you learn more being in service to others, and what are they doing to realize that? But I want to say, I saw, I saw the new van the other day with the Blue Falcon on the side, whatever the catchphrase becomes that needs to be put on that van, it was really impressive seeing it riding around, like, it's just, you know, it was like a college scene, driving through town, and you see their logo on, on the van. But I do like this, I like, it's a proactive approach, and, you know, for anyone who has students that are outside the building and not having a great time, we'll, we'll be happily take you back, come on back, because great things are happening every day. Anything else?
No, and, I mean, aside from, you know, we're mentioning all the high school stuffs, but we have a lot of great things, like we've mentioned throughout the night, here at the middle school, as well as the elementary schools, so to see them possibly have little corners, you know, maybe their art or their science projects or things like that just being broadcast across, and seeing how it transitions through from one level to the next, that would be, you know, as well, a big piece, I think, so.
If I may, Chair, and thank you for bringing that up, Sean. When the band performed for opening day, it was awesome, they played Sweet Caroline, it was a lot of fun, but it was a sense of pride, because those students, they started off in our elementary band program, they came here the middle school band program. You know, when you see a performance at the middle school, there's a lot of interface with all those groups, and I appreciate that, because, you know, we talk about when students graduate, it's all a comble of experience, cumulative experience, right? So we do need to promote that, you know, I've been to the open house, you should see, it's amazing the work that's happening, but to your point, yes, we need to, and I, I do believe people are making decisions about, you know, there are more options today than there were 20 years ago. You know, I'm kind of old now, but, you know, the old saying was, you know, you just move on to your public schools, but that's not necessarily the case these days, and I'm not knocking it, the world has changed, so we have to adjust with that and say, like, these are the things that we have, it's not a competition necessarily, but we really need to, so when people are making decisions, oh, you have that, you have that, my child can have that experience, they can go to a high level, because you can talk to families that their children go to high-level colleges, or they graduate with great skills that they can be very successful in the job market, or whatever they choose to do. So it's exciting to me, because this is really kind of the fun part of the work, but it is, it's, and I hope to have school committee involvement with this process too.
Okay, where do we have now? Appointment of delegate and alternate to the MASC annual business meeting. I get to appoint.
Yes, Chair, you do, that's November 12th to the 14th at Hyannis. Yes.
Anyone have interest in attending the Mass Superintendent School Committee Business Meeting? November 12th to the 14th. How many do I get to appoint? Two?
Appointment of delegate and alternate.
Oh, a del, one.
Get one.
Should maybe wait till Eric, can we wait till Eric or two? Eric's not here. Can we table this until we contact Eric, see if he has any interest?
Sure, our next meeting is October 6th, so I think before then, I'll have, see what we can do for reservations and just hold it.
Okay, why don't we do that? Uh, or minutes, the secretary approves to release the minutes, secretary's not here.
I can just say, the secretary moves to release the regular meeting minutes from the 2024, 2025 school year. Regular meeting minutes, not executive session, yes?
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda, motion to approve the personal, personnel memo fundraising request and homeschool applications.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any communications? Do we have any communications? I think we do. Legislation, Eric's not here, and we have a subcommittee meeting coming up, don't we?
Yes, we do, the policy subcommittee, I believe, is September 20th. Safety committee will be meeting at the end of September, I know Eric attended that last year, but I'll send out information if anybody's interested on that.
Thank you. Any other items of interest? Anyone want to bring up?
I do have one thing, Chair, if that's okay.
Sure.
Right, all right, the North Shore Educational Collaborative, which were one of, I think, 18 members, they have successfully settled the contract, they did that about, at the end of August, and it fell within the budgetary measures, which is very nice, and talking with our transportation coordinator, we'll have an update in the next meeting, talk about how that is working, the consolidation of that is working.
Great, thank you for that. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night, Danvers, thank you for being